Putting those written on the librarian's account. The treasure.
Why don't you leave it the way it is? Because the account is not going to require the treasurer's signature.
Right.
As a counter signature.
Right.
The same way with the payroll account, it's not going to require the treasurer's signature.
Right. And, oh, that was a...
Oh, here, the next sentence, the one that says except for payroll, and then that should say and librarian's account.
Yeah, that would cover.
The cosign, right, okay.
It would be cosign.
Okay, on the cosign, right. Except for payroll and...
Librarians.
There we go, now we got it.
Thank you. If I get this typed right, I think I'll be...
Well, we're all keeping good notes.
I think we should get a salary raise for...
You get a hundred percent more. You get a hundred percent more. Article four, committee's...
Article three.
There shall be standing committees.
We just finished article three, now we're on article four? Article four, I'm going to get there. I can't be any more confused than I am. I understand it. Should we compare notes later? We just changed words on this phrase.
On section one, two, three, four, I take out the word non-voting on the fourth line, because we don't do any voting in the committees. Fourth line, section four.
Oh, you already downed to section four?
Well, I agree with everything of all.
We do vote on a committee.
Not really, we agree to things, but we don't really vote. Votes take place here.
Would you vote to make a recommendation to the board?
Yeah.
Well, yeah, but I'd rather leave it. I'd rather use the word vote for when we're all sitting in here and come to an agreement in a committee. I mean, it's just me, but use whatever word you want, but...
What does the old one say?
Well, Gobin had a bunch of...
Section four, which...
I think the point of it was that the president is on every committee, but he has a non-voting member.
Well, the president's ex officio.
The president's ex officio.
That doesn't mean not...
It does not necessarily mean not voting.
No, this one here said the library director's a non-voting.
Oh, or...
The library director, that's right.
Yeah, she should just be as an advisory member.
That's why we put that, that's right.
We tried to reword the description of who was in the committees.
I just don't want somebody to say, hey, you guys are voting in committee.
No.
And I just want to take that word. I want to take voting in committee and keep them apart. Is there a different word if you need to?
Well, I guess what the point of it was...
Make recommendations.
Yeah, the people on the committee were actually the one... The board members would be the ones that had the ultimate decision, but the input of the library director...
As an advisor.
So, well, here, the finance committee shall... Well, how about you just end it. The president is an ex officio member, period. The library director is an advisory member.
It changes all the committees, actually. Let me go back to the top, duties and duties. Section two, any problems with adding that in here?
No.
Anybody?
Well, the standing committees must meet, or...
Yeah.
I thought so.
Even if it's only just before a board meeting, there really should be. That's been a big downfall in this last little while.
I'm okay with it in there.
Get back to section one.
I'm okay with the whole thing.
Go back to section...
Are the committee terms not two years?
I don't know.
They are.
Are they two years? Because there was nothing in the...
Oh, yeah, we can it, Kevin.
Each member of a standing committee shall serve until the next annual meeting. So, we never had any term limits.
Wait, the committee members are one year. The chair, the...
The officers, right.
The officers are two.
Right.
Yeah.
Well, I think it's been done as two years in the past.
It might have been done, but it was never called out.
Well, the next annual meeting means that you would appoint committees every year.
May, every May.
So, it does say one year.
Maybe we should just say May in here.
Yeah, well, it says...
Well, it says it in the previous thing. I don't think it would hurt to say May.
Or when did you do it last year?
It was April or May, somewhere in the spring.
He just done it on the election.
Yeah, he did it. He got all switched around.
Your officers should be elected.
Every two years, I do have for this. Because this year, there's a reset.
But each member of a standing committee shall serve one year.
Yeah.
And that's a good idea, because when people come in and drop off, that way they can be put on a committee.
That's fine.
Straight out.
Yeah, it's no big deal. I mean, you could not reset the committee and it stays the same.
So, you can set it the same.
Right, so, you know, do you want to be on his committee? No, do you? Sure, okay, there. I mean, it can be, I... I'm good with this page.
Because we're not talking about officers at all, right?
No, no.
Just members.
I'm good with this page.
See, now here, in the middle of section four, I guess it is, the renumbered section four. It should be a duty, this is in finance, to direct the investing of funds not needed for current expenses. That's the kind of wording. Kind of relates to the previous thing we're talking about, the treasurer. Whether it's a reinvestment or not.
I have a question.
Kathy, do you want to answer?
Thank you. The seventh line of section four, that's the one on the bottom, it starts with made in accordance with the state statute. The next chunk is to review salary schedule and make recommendations for the director's salary. The director's salary is decided by the board as a whole.
Yes, it is.
Yeah, it's reading that by the treasurer.
And the other is...
No, the finance committee, not the treasurer. We're talking about the finance.
It shouldn't even be the... It should be the board as a whole, because the board as a whole is going to be doing the assessments. So, it seems to me that that follows. The other part is, I don't believe the finance committee should be in the position of reviewing the salary schedule.
And I think it's necessary.
It's a... Okay, because I...
Because since we don't write the checks, since the treasurer doesn't have to be a co-signatory on it, the only checks and balances that the board has about the salary, which is two-thirds of the budget, is to be able to see how things are being appropriated that way.
I don't think it should be by individual people.
Well, that's a treasurer's job.
First of all, let's define what salary schedule means.
That's why, I was just going to say, what does salary schedule mean?
Well, to me, salary schedule means that you've got a number of job descriptions, not people filling those jobs, but a number of job descriptions from receptionist through director. And the salary schedule is what your ranges for each of those.
You said we don't have that.
Which we don't have, okay, that's good.
There have to be a salary schedule to be true, but I...
But it's also a benefit service by the librarian.
Right.
What we're really talking about here is, is what is the finance committee going to review, really the board should...
So, historically, it's always headed by the board. At the start of the last board meeting, I mentioned that this year, I wanted this board to come up with this thing. The job descriptions to say, we don't have it, we should have it.
Right.
The board should look at it and agree to it and motion to accept it. Because we're spending money. To Kathy's point, she's right. We should know what's going on with salary.
A salary schedule, but not by individual person.
No, we don't look at individual...
I don't want to know who gets what.
Well, we always have. There's always been published.
Well, no, that's a different issue. Yes, it's published, but that has nothing to do with the board proving.
No, you're correct, but we always knew.
We need to write the job descriptions, put in the salary ranges, present it to the board, approve it.
We have the job descriptions. What we don't have is the structure that groups them with...
Our new director's going to do that.
They just don't know.
Because we need to, Kathy's point, I mean, it's part of what we should be doing. And whether we word it in here that way or not.
And just from an accounting standpoint, I do take a look every so often and make sure that what is supposed to be paid is being paid salary-wise, that the numbers match.
Okay, because we need that just to review the budget.
No, this is a separate thing. This is a separate act that we've not done.
Of the accounts and the budget, okay.
There's salary. And using the word review salary schedule doesn't mean that you're setting anyone's salary. It means that you're just reviewing what the schedule is.
Just looking at the bookkeeping, that's it.
So, it's not like you're...
Right, it's the director sets the salaries. And we set the director's salary. But somebody has to make sure that all the downos are...
We need to write, we have to write it up.
So, we'll be complying with that when we come into that thing?
Now, you're on the policy committee.
No, I haven't left section four yet. The last line and a half. Go up to almost the bottom. And to prepare and submit the appropriation tax levy to the entire board for final adoption. Prepare and submit has to be dropped out to fit what we just said.
Same wording we had in the other one.
Well, yeah.
Probably would be...
I think what happened originally...
Do you want me to look at this where I... Have you suggested language perception?
I think what happened originally, the very first year mark, was that the executive committee actually was the one that got together with the director and kind of hashed through a preliminary, preliminary budget. And I think that's what this is speaking to.
That's... When were you thinking that happened? Ever since you guys have been here?
Mm-hmm, the very first year.
Really?
I don't know, Mark and I were there. I don't know if Paul was there.
So, right, if you're...
These things should be... These things should really be dovetailed.
Do you want me to send you everything that I do know? And you can go through and make changes on some of this wording?
Okay.
Either you want to have one thing, happy at least to work with.
Yeah, you want, you wanted me to write something up for section eight. For article two, section eight. For article two, section eight, you want me to write something up for a two-step budget process?
Right.
Yes.
And then what you want to do is you want that to be consistent and maybe on the... You want that to be consistent with the bottom or the end of article four.
Right, which is the same as, which has the same wording. Now, I made it to determine review and oversee, just like we said for the treasurer before. It's the same wording at least, and it's...
Some due need.
I think we can leave it at that.
Because, Bart, I think the part you might not be familiar with as far as what's gone on in the past is that before the budget is first even put together, there is at least some loose communication saying, we would like things to stay, you know, within this amount.
Oh, yeah, I understand.
So, there is a, I mean, the director, right. The director is not just totally out there on their own wondering what in the world the board might...
I hope they wouldn't be...
Let's keep going.
Okay. Somebody's in a hurry.
I want to get this over with.
You want to get it over with?
Yeah, I do.
So, what should I say?
Section, is there really section five?
It's really section five, the one on the top. The policy committee shall consist of two trustees appointed by the president. The president is an ex officio member, period. And the director is an advisory member.
Yeah, let's get up and on board.
The committee is responsible for appointing one of the trustees as its chairman, chairperson. The committee is, too many committees is responsible for. Reviewing new or revised library policies deemed necessary for the operation of the library and its personnel prior to presentation in board as a whole. To make recommendations to the board of directors regarding these policies. And third, I would also to identify the need for additional policies.
Well, you might be getting a little redundant there, because you say, because we do use reviewing new, so somebody must have done something.
Yeah, and deemed necessary, somebody somewhere along the way.
So, I'm good with that. And then, so the building of Browns becomes the facilities committee.
Right, and again, the...
Shall consist of the library and advisory. Get that voting word out of there.
We added this visit other libraries as an alternative method of learning things. It's minor.
It should be in the bylaw.
I, you could leave it in or take it out, and...
Yeah, I just thought it was a suggestion.
I'd take it out.
What, are you taking out?
If any presents itself visit other libraries. They can do that, I know.
Frank, I have a question. On the next, section seven, is there special committees versus... To me, a special committee is, we're using the word special for this meeting. To me, is it...
This is, well, this is a special board meeting.
I understand. But the word special versus an ad hoc, to me, I'm used to hearing the word ad hoc when you form a committee for a temporary period of time.
I think that would be fine.
Oh, ad hoc.
Ad hoc as opposed to special.
Yeah, it was just a word question.
It has extra authority or something.
Right.
Okay. And we're good with page seven.
So, you're going to say ad hoc committee?
Yes.
Page eight and nine could all be dropped, because it all falls under state statute. And you don't really use that, unless somebody tells me otherwise. It's a bunch of garbly book.
I would agree to it, because what it really is is a recitation of certain sections of the statute.
Now that we have PMA, we don't need this.
And that takes us over to article five.
Well, if we're following statute, we just need to say we...
We put it in there a number of times, following state statute.
Yeah, one of the things maybe we can do is... Let me look at it. The only thing I was suggesting, would suggest is maybe that, you know, all investments shall be in compliance, you know...
Something like that, I have no problem with it. You go on your wording laws.
It's in the law too, though, isn't it? I mean, it's already in the law.
Well, what you're doing is, is you're saying as a matter of policy of your library that you're going to comply with the laws, really what you're saying. That's all, that's all you're saying.
Because the PMA already has that included.
Yeah, should there be a statement like, wait up at the top of the whole thing? The library will follow all applicable state laws or something like that?
We kind of threw it in a number of times.
Well, they list the Illinois Banking Act, FDIC.
You know, I don't think we need to go into that.
Illinois...
No, I thought it was an awful lot of detail compared to the rest of the bylaws, which is skimpy.
That's because if it's not, they used to do this law.
What's playing on ditching it?
Actually, they didn't.
Okay, buy, buy green stuff.
Buy green stuff.
Article five administration.
Is, okay. A lot of grammar changes, mostly.
It needed it.
How come you like the INGs as opposed to the two?
I don't know.
I'm just asking, because I'm just, usually you see a two-employee, two, you know...
I get tired of seeing the same word all the time.
Yeah.
Well, if you're going with the original text, it says this includes two, then you couldn't say two-employee.
No, you couldn't say two-employee.
Maybe that's why.
I think it breaks the law.
We just made it consistent.
Okay.
No reason, I just, I'm not a grammarian. And I've proven it over and over and over.
Thank you, Frank.
Huh?
So, page nine is good.
You surely know.
So, you added section...
I think in section two, you're a little more E W'sing to me.
I mean, it doesn't say in here that the rest of the staff are a valuable judge on the report. I mean, they are, of course, but it's not stated, so that seems...
I think you should leave yourself the ability to do the director's review however you see fit. That's what I think.
Just the directors to be evaluated in January.
Basis.
We have no authority over the other employees.
Well, the only one we look at is the director.
No, that I know. That's fine. I liked it, it's...
Well, Bart, you wrote this part.
So... I changed my mind forty-nine times.
Frank's point, this might be just a little too...
Inside baseball?
Yeah.
Well, you do run into troubles with it, too.
What I'm saying is that you're setting yourselves up with...
You're going to have to follow exactly this procedure.
Right, and if you decide that it's really not something you want to follow, then you've got to amend your bylaws. You know, the whole idea of the bylaws is to be a general set of rules, you know, by which you'll govern yourself. The director's going to be evaluated on an annual basis. You've decided in January, in January, and that's your bylaw. You're going to evaluate that director every January, and you're going to figure out how you're going to do it. And, you know, maybe your policy committee's going to say, you know, here, you should use this form for evaluating the director. Maybe they won't. Maybe you'll all sit around at a table with the director, talk about how things are going, and you say, okay, good evaluation.
Roll the dice, and it's the pay increase.
And I bet you the director, I bet you the director will have their own threshold form that they've used in the past.
That they will. So, then section two could be this director or the directors to be evaluated in January on an annual basis, period, right? So, then section three, we may get this done. The director determines what's due. Yeah.
Is there a...
Why are you...
Why is this in a bylaw? Isn't that a policy?
In ILA, it actually recommended you put this stuff into a bylaw, because they're kind of saying this is a ready reference guide for the board. Because we never, it wasn't called out anywhere else.
This has nothing to do with the board. It says the director will determine it and the library will pay it. What does it have to do with board?
Well, we're giving a general overview of her job description.
I guess, I guess.
Because this is an overview of her job descriptions. And in that sense, it's prior for job description.
Or it is.
His job description.
Or it is.
Hers or his, his or hers, I'm sorry.
Yeah, but it's true, the bylaws cover the board and to some extent, the director.
Right.
This was an ILA recommendation at one point, so...
And I think it was...
And this also, this next one here in section four, that was an ILA recommendation.
I was going to say, it's another ILA bylaw thing, yeah. Because I saw that one when I was giving...
But should it say the board will motion to approve? I mean, that seems rather preordaining.
I think you should, I think you should delete the last sentence.
I agree with you.
And the board, you know...
Or even the board will approve the disposition of the items.
Well, it might not.
Oh, it says ask the board.
Does the director periodically ask the board for approval of disposal?
One of the boards...
No, no, I didn't mean it that way.
One of the boards says no.
No, 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 I didn't mean it that way. I meant that the board will either approve or disapprove. But that's already...
All right, we're taking out that last sentence from section...
Yes, we took it out.
So, then through page ten.
Next page almost has nothing. How exciting.
A roll call.
I think that six, the one change is good. I think that seven, you should leave closed session, because the statute refers to open and closed.
Is that statute?
Yeah, the State, the Open Meetings Act refers to, doesn't refer to executive session, refers to open session or closed session.
Also, should we take up word executive then? Because it's one of the two words that are redundant.
May adjourn to closed session.
Yeah, I mean, everybody says executive session. So, everybody knows what you mean when you say executive session. So, you could say one or the other, I suppose. You know, I like, if you adjourned to closed session, I would say that.
That's what it was. It's going back to what it was, yeah.
Yeah, and get away with it, and get out of executive. Did it have open there before?
No, it just said closed before.
Okay, we're on eight, right?
Yes. What does professionals' reports mean?
I have no idea.
I think that, I don't know, what is...
I mean, it's not librarians, because that's previous.
I don't know.
I have no idea.
I have no idea.
I mean, it could mean like, you know, somebody like John Easter, that usually falls under new or old business.
You do staff reports?
Which, yeah.
Under pub, instead of public comments, can you help resident comments?
No.
No, because they may have the residence...
Because anybody can get up and comment during an open comment. In an open, there's a new law actually effective this year that anybody from anywhere can get up during an open comment section of meeting and talk about something totally unrelated to the library.
Really?
Yeah, they want to stand up there and talk gun control. They can do it for three minutes.
The Open Meetings Act says public comment, not resident comment.
It's not, you don't say, you didn't say a clinical's residents on the parentheses?
I think the village can do what they want to do. I'm not the village attorney, but I'm telling you that the Open Meetings Act says it's public comments. And it doesn't differentiate between residents and non-residents. It says the public shall have a right to speak, or have a right to address the board.
Public comments and agenda? We have public comments and not agenda, okay.
I think the professional reports are supposed to be like Frank's and...
Usually you say staff reports.
Yeah.
But you're not staff.
I'm not. You're right.
At the other, they use the other report.
That's where it came from.
Yeah, it is where it came from, what we were going to call Frank.
Well, professionally, right, it would be...
Well, professionals' reports would be the director and the...
Right.
But the director's must be...
Well, why don't you just say...
Librarian's report.
Why don't you just say corporate counsel?
Yeah, yeah.
It doesn't give room if somebody else is here.
No, you can't, because it says and shall include.
We can't do shall.
Right.
Sure you can.
Why not?
No, the agenda shall include this. It's going to have all the order roll call.
What your agenda's going to be.
I think we have...
But then you're mandating that there's going to be a lawyer here at all of our meetings, and probably it wasn't going to be the idea.
So, there is, the agenda's going to have this, and we may or may not have counsel. Counsel may or may not have a report. But it's going to be on...
Well, wait a second. Why don't you just take professionals' reports out?
There you go. And then it can be added in any kind of various ones.
Exactly, because you've already established that the president's going to make the agenda, so the agenda can or cannot include. Why don't you do that? That'd be the easiest thing to do.
It's out.
Okay, page one.
Wait, is it necessary to have a roll call to change the agenda? The last sentence before the first yellow box. Any point in the meeting after roll call, the order is to be modified.
At any point in the meeting after roll call. At any point in the meeting after roll call, meaning, in other words, after.
If we decide that the meeting, meeting's in session.
Yes, I was thinking, you had to have your roll call.
No.
After a roll call approved it, then.
No.
Right, right.
No, we just have the whole thing. So page eleven.
Well, but it's also with approval of a majority of the justice president, I mean, that's just like, we all, or you're a state vote.
So this says. This says that you technically are, well, I guess you could approve it by the voice board.
We've pretty much, what do you think?
We basically, basically.
Go SBI here by a certain time, or let's move them up, okay.
Well, I mean, that's just kind of crazy.
Right, exactly.
Page twelve.
Okay, I'm gifts. I've been working very hard on this one, and I've got something totally different than what's here. And I know you haven't had a chance to look at it, and we can leave it, but I would like to hand out what I've worked on. And the first two paragraphs in here are what exists in the present bylaws. What I.
Is it just one page or is it two pages?
It's just one page. Forget the first two paragraphs, because one is what exists and what was handed out. One is what I wrote, which is almost the same. I, where it says a proposed total article seven revision distributed tonight is the one I'm talking about that, I'll shut up.
What are you changing?
What I'm changing is, and I don't even know if it's an issue. What I'm changing is dedicated gifts versus non-dedicated gifts. In other words, I leave money to the library, but it only could be used for mystery novels. Versus, I leave money for the library. I like mystery novels, especially if they're written by women.
It went right in there.
I think it reads well.
And I was trying to get out extra language.
Why are you gonna sell real estate immediately?
That was Bart's recommendation.
That's me.
What if you wanna hold it?
We're not real estate managers.
We're not the village.
So, we're not, yeah, right, we didn't buy the two novels.
Pretty soon the village is gonna own the entire village at the right time.
But we don't, yeah. So, we get, we get, somebody gives us an apartment building, now we become landlords.
Why do you have to decide to do it in your bylaw as opposed to at the time that the donation comes? What if, maybe we're not there anymore, but who have vacant land? What if, what if, what if Nards gives you the outlot and says, you know, you could use that, we'll gift it to you, you can build your library on it if you want to? And you're like, hey, you know what, we don't have to pay real estate taxes on it, maybe we'll hold it for a while and see what happens. You know, you don't, you know, do you have, you're violating your bylaws if you don't sell it immediately.
Yeah, because what if we wanna talk about it or have a referendum to build the library?
How about as soon as possible?
On the other hand, we can rent it.
Well, but that's.
You guys just don't wanna be landlords.
We're not, see, we're a library and we're a board.
I did put in here though, let me interrupt you.
Not real estate.
In this one, I did put in, unless the property appears to have a valid purpose for the designated function of the library.
You know what, you're right.
It could be a good safety valve.
Let's roll with it, looks good.
My God, I'm getting legal. My doctor father is rolling around in his grave, you know.
I'm not sure that I like, I'm not sure that I like the one, two, and three, but that's okay.
Okay.
Well, it looks to me like you're trying to, and I.
I'm trying to.
And I thought I was gonna have a chance to do this, but it looks to me like you're trying to meld the donation policy and the bylaw, the pre-existing bylaw together. And I was gonna try and see if I could do that, but I didn't get to it until.
What I was trying to do is make sure we don't have another. Situation. The money is accepted by the library, period, end of sentence. It's up to the board to make sure the money's used in a reasonable way.
It won't, it won't take, it won't stop what happened last time though, because the issue last time, one of the issues was the fact that the money wasn't raised for the purpose of the law.
Well, that is something the library could write into their policy. They have a gifts policy, which I brought with me. It's like Kevin said, it needs a lot of work. That's why I didn't make copies of it.
It needs to be.
But that could be written into the gifts policy, money donated to the library, that's, take care of it, right there. To the library. And that's the end of the sentence.
Well, but it depends how you define to the library.
Well, I mean, that three thousand dollars.
That's what the problem, that's the problem.
It was donated to, well, but it wasn't donated to the library, it was donated to the.
In our opinion, it wasn't.
Exactly. Well, that's up to the library though, right into their policy, how they wanna handle. That situation is not gonna happen again, we've got a reputation in the world.
And we hope not. We hope not, but we didn't think Krista Quinn would happen either. But I think the board has to decide, has to take on a case-by-case basis.
Well, okay, we don't look at every donation.
Right.
Nor should we.
Exactly.
The only other way to handle it. That's the, I was just gonna say, the only other way I see of handling it is donations of five thousand dollars or more, or three thousand dollars or more.
Or why don't we just hold the donations till the board meeting in a pile, like.
I'll tell you why. I mean, we don't need a pile. Well, I know for the last month.
First of all, to be one solid reason, having worked twenty-plus years for a fundraising organization, you don't hold their checks, because there's no bigger insult to me as the donator than my check not getting cashed.
Wait for that thing to clear.
I gave money to someplace recent, in February, a place that has gotten a significant amount of money from me every year, that they have not spent it on what it was designated for, and it was a designated request. And here it is, a year later, it hasn't been purchased yet, and they haven't gotten another penny out of it. And I am not different than most contributors, because I've worked with these people.
So.
That's why.
We don't need to see every donation.
We definitely do not, I mean, I could see donations over the amount of five thousand.
If there's extraordinary donations, they're gonna show up in the newspaper, in the director's desk, they're gonna tell us something.
That's right.
Why don't we just put some number on here, three thousand dollars, or whatever, that if it is above this amount, it will be, at least the board will be advised of it.
What is, what is section two trying to say?
I'm just trying to, I'm just trying to define dedicated versus non-dedicated, basically.
Are the.
Section two is as opposed to what was in here.
Are the definitions gonna be in it, or are they just here?
I would leave them in.
It has to be split out between.
I would leave them in from the application. I'm not a lawyer, I don't know these words, I know, I know the word dedicated, but I still have to look it up to make sure, not what I thought it meant legally.
Making all this.
I think we need. And out, if somebody gives us some large amount of money for some purpose that is completely impractical.
Right, let's say they give us.
The ability to send it back to them and say it doesn't.
Exactly.
Right.
But we have that ability. You have the ability to.
They give us money for all the male librarians to have a call girl for five nights in a row. Not the females, only the males.
Finally.
Do I have to change where?
You're not, you're not in a.
I'm losing it.
Doesn't cover board members?
Art, the real me is coming out tonight.
So Kevin, what happens if we get a donation and somebody says it's only to paint this room purple? We can just send it back and say, sorry.
Oh, that's no problem, yeah.
Sorry, that doesn't fit within the.
If we feel that we are able to reject it, if it doesn't say it in the bylaws, I mean, do we need to explicitly say it early as ago without saying?
Well, the gifts aren't to be used to advance.
Why don't we just leave it in, and we can reject or accept any as the board desires?
Of course, without saying that if, if a, if a, if a donation does not fit with your organization, you certainly have a right to send it back.
So we don't have to explicitly say that?
No, you don't have to say that.
Who wants to word this shit? We have fifteen minutes to finish here.
What's the, let's see, other than the sentence not making perfect sense.
There's a little redundancy in here too, and I'm not the greatest wordsmith.
And I've worked on this too long.
Was any conclusion reached about the dollar limit?
No.
No. How about if we just change the current wording and change it from when to if?
I think we got a couple of issues that are sort of being talked about, and one issue is, you know, at what point is the board making the decision whether to accept or reject the donation? And then the other issue is, well, really, I think that's really the issue.
It is the issue.
I think that's really the issue we're getting at. And the other issue would be, would you have a limit where, under a certain limit, the board would, the board really wouldn't care? You know, we trust the library director, and let the director make the decision as to whether to accept or reject the donation. And then the, and then above a certain limit, you know, I think all donations are gonna be brought to the board's attention at the, you know, at the, either in the librarian's rapport or in the, in the board meeting.
So.
We wanna be counting, hey, people are giving us money.
It should be, plus the secretary should be acknowledging.
And that too, but.
So what?
We wanna be in a situation where, like this last month, it seemed like Kevin felt like he was prohibited from depositing a ten-dollar check. Because at the previous board meeting, you know, there was a, there was an undercurrent that, you know, only the board can make the decision whether to accept or reject a donation. So I think it's, I think it's a waste of your time.
I don't think we want to.
We don't want that, I understand why Kevin, I think it was smart because of all that was going on.
So maybe gifts in excess of a, gifts in excess of a thousand dollars and non-cash donations are brought before the board.
Right.
Say in or and?
And.
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 So non-cash, cars, houses, land.
So if somebody wants. Yeah, if somebody wants to give you a car, to donate a car to the library, you're like, well, wait a second, this.
Yeah, I gotta go talk to the board.
I don't know if the dollar amount is the overriding thing though.
Okay, then no dollar amount, so.
Well, without dollar amount, then how am I not bringing a ten-dollar check?
Well, because.
You can't say, you can't say donations that are offensive to you, or to him, or to her.
Did I say?
You can't say that, no, but that's what you wanna say.
No, that's not what I wanna say.
And it's hard, it's hard for that to work.
What I wanna say is, you know how it says outside of the usual, that the treasurer can sign checks within the usual course of business? That's the kind of wording I want. Usual and customary donations, donations by, by residents.
Oh, Mr. Maida's donation was.
We never.
All customary donations.
What?
Mr. Maida's donation was the usual and customary donation?
Oh, Frank, don't get me aggravated.
Who determined that?
That's ridiculous, who makes that determination?
Who's just?
That was a bounce back from what was given, you're telling me that was the usual and customary?
What's usual and customary?
There is no usual and customary donation here, because we rarely get any, and because of Meta, we got more money that came in in a couple of weeks than.
Right, for the last ten years.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So I would say make it a thousand dollars and make it non-cash, bring it before the board to take a look.
I mean, it's either of those.
Yes.
A thou, more than a thousand dollars in cash, or any non-cash.
I think thousands to any. Any donation.
And if the board feels.
A thousand dollars is nothing.
And here's your, and here's your, here's your help, here's your help. You have a situation like, like the one that just.
Happened.
You have a situation like the one that just came up, okay? And the board feels strongly that they need to make this, you know, override the director, and the board can do it.
Yeah.
It's your, it's money that's coming to your library, and you have, you know, have to have ultimate control over it, you know? But I mean, but I don't think that, I don't think that in the, in the exercise of common sense, I don't think it's something you really wanna get involved in.
I would like to just go back to what Art said several times, just go back to the mission statement. If the money's given with no strings attached, keep it. If it's given with strings attached, but it fits within the mission, keep it. If it doesn't fit within the mission and your strings attached, then discuss it.
Yeah.
I think you're right, Art, I think that's.
Yes.
Makes sense. Yeah, if you're guided by the mission statement.
Right. It's for the good of the library, period, and the president's workroom.
And in that sense, we should have kept it.
Okay, so now have we then lost?
Have you spent too much time on the, on this one issue?
Yeah, she went to the food pantry.
Have we lost the dollar cutoff?
Yes.
So we're not going to put a dollar cutoff on this for any kind of a review.
I would.
Well, is the, is the board gonna be?
I don't want the board to look at donations.
Is the board gonna be accepting or rejecting every donation?
You don't want, you don't want the responsibility to looking at any donations at all?
No, no, I want fifty bucks to come in the mail and go into the bank account. I don't need to look at it.
I worked twenty years in an office and accepted donations, sometimes they were five thousand dollars.
How many, wait, but we're all, we're an elected, we're elected.
We had an elected board.
Wait, wait, look.
I didn't pay much attention to that.
Look at. As elected officials.
What difference does it make to look at the twenty-dollar donation?
What difference is in that?
If it, not the twenty-dollar donation, that's not what I'm talking about. What I'm talking about is like what was hap, what happened before, is what I'm saying is, there are times when it's not.
You know what, the whole joke of it is, if none of us knew what happened in the Park District, all we would have known is Mr. Maida sent us three thousand X dollars.
Oh, then, you know why that's not true though, because it was his.
Look at the ultimate.
Purpose was his whole purpose.
You didn't know his purpose though, all he says is this is part of the purpose, it's just to get publicity.
We gotta stick to the bylaws. We got eight minutes to finish this.
Okay.
You might not put this on the agenda, but we're good.
Non-dedication rises at one thousand dollars.
Let's finish it tonight.
What are we saying here? What, I mean, who's rewriting this?
Are you rewriting this one?
Sure, I'll be happy to.
I thought so.
I am uncomfortable without having a dollar limit in there.
I think this, this is written very well.
Unless you have.
If we get a donation from the land, my wife's having a loss.
I thought so.
I don't see any reason why not.
No.
Why don't you accept this?
Really?
Really, that's written, if it's to the library, unattended.
And then, and then you get, then you get the report coming up, you two months later saying, why didn't you accept the hundred dollars from the land?
Take the definitions out.
Well, you know what, if you just have.
I didn't accept it, I didn't accept it.
I kept looking back at them to help me read something else.
But what I wanna know is.
Why make it public?
What I wanna know is, is. What I wanna know is, is what do you mean by shall best the title of the donation to the library?
That was wordage that was here already, and I didn't know what to do with it.
Well, what I'm saying though is, are non-dedicated donations accepted by the library without board approval, is that what you're saying?
All I would say is, if they fall within the, if they're non-dedicated, yeah, without board approval. I don't see a reason to put a dollar limit on it, I don't see what difference it makes.
But you're saying without board approval, but, so you're getting rid of the to be held and controlled by the board?
Yes, that's, well, controlled in the sense of how it's used.
I wonder, that's a, that's a definition there.
Once you put the money into the bank account, the director's gonna spend.
This is a wordage that came out of here, and I thought some of it had to be, and I honestly don't like any of it.
Why don't we rewrite the gifts entirely?
Yeah, rewrite it all, totally.
Well, which I said at last meeting I wanted to do, but I mean, it had to be done in conjunction with this.
Right.
Which is fine, wouldn't it?
Why don't we just rewrite gifts entirely?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, me or you, you?
Sure.
Because I'm at the point where I'm so confused, I don't know which way to go.
Okay, fine, what is the intent of the gift section?
But, but that's, that's what I'm getting at. I can't write it unless you tell me what you want it to be.
To me, the intent is just to control dedicated gifts so that they're within the.
We want to know.
The confines of the mission statement.
Right.
Without stipulation.
And that it's the library's responsibility to accept gifts and to manage, and to handle them in an appropriate manner. In other words, thank the giver, et cetera. Keeping a, a record of who's given money, that kind of stuff should be in their policy or in their procedure. And beyond that.
Well, the library also has the right of refusal.
The right to refuse a gift.
There's a right.
The library should have the right of refusal. They're the ones accepting.
However you phrase it, I mean, well, I, I like Art's.
No.
If it's within the scope of the library.
If it fits within the scope of the library's mission statement, then we accept it.
Yes.
And that's your, that's your, your, your limitation.
But who's the we? Are you giving it power then to the director or are you giving it to the board?
I'm giving it to the library.
Well, no, no, the library isn't a human. You need a human.
Well, the library is the board.
Well, then it's the director.
No, the library is the board though. That's why it falls on us. But.
Yeah, see if you, that's why I was confused about what you meant because the library.
I don't know what I mean anymore.
But you were, you were using the library as the staff, if you will.
Yeah, yeah.
As opposed to the board.
Yeah, that's what I was doing exactly.
That's what I thought.
That the library manages the income of the money.
Yeah, and what you say, controlled by the board, you mean that in the general sense?
Whoever normally catches checks.
Actually, the treasurer knows about everything. She'll know about everything that comes in. That's part of what the treasurer's job is.
Why don't we take two minutes off of this?
And it's like the secretary's job to write the notes.
Do the last page and come back to this.
That's fine.
We'll refresh our brains. So Article nine amendments.
I also have an ethics statement that came through that I would rather insert, and again, this maybe we can't do today. This is right out of A L A. I thought it was a better, more complete ethics statement than what we have, although it's mostly the same and yes, some additions.
Where in here do we?
This is approved by the.
I think we need to define who speaks for the board or who speaks for the library somewhere in these things.
I think that, that that's a good, good permit. I have, in the, in my notes I have whether or not, and maybe you would want to put it in this section. But in the president's things, I was thinking about whether you wanted to have something that said that the president is the spokesman, is the spokesperson for the board or no other. And, and no other trustee shall represent themselves as this, as the spokesperson for the board.
That's probably good because it takes the heat off the other trustees too. If the press is trying to talk to them and call you and harass you, just say, sorry, I don't speak for the board and politely hang up.
I mean, everyone can always speak in their own individual capacity.
Yeah.
No one else can speak for the board besides the president though.
You're not supposed to speak to newspapers or such, or the press.
You're not supposed to give an impression that you are speaking for the board.
Yes.
Right.
Right, only your own person.
You can speak as an individual all the time, but.
So you're adding that as a plus.
Yes, they add.
You can't help how the press represents it.
Well.
Compared to how the person represents itself.
But the person should start by saying, okay, I'm not speaking for the board. This is my opinion and that. And then, yes, they may get misquoted, you can't help that, but at least they said that they're not speaking for the board.
Well, the president can only, is the only one that can speak for the board anyway.
But nobody else necessarily knows that. I don't mean nobody here, I mean, press, but it's, you know, they.
Well, they know it, but they don't pay attention, you know, let's be honest. They don't.
It's, it's.
Well, okay, I agree with that.
He was just passing it around to show that there was something in here from the library.
No, wait a minute.
No, it's Chamber Crown.
Hey, Art.
It's coming in the, it's coming in the mail.
That came here at four o'clock today when I was in a board meeting over at the Chamber. So that's, that's hot off the press.
Yeah.
It's coming to you via mail.
Yes.
Next year.
Yeah.
We'll get it next day or two.
If they find your address, it's been the same for.
Okay, so are you saying, Art, that the ethics should be these?
I think it's a, it's a more complete statement.
Well, it's ju, it, it take, it takes this and adds another one.
It's add a couple to what was already in existence. Apparently, this was already taken from something of a similar nature.
That's what this was taken from.
I'm sure it was.
The Agnes Quinn amendment is what they did.
Well, this one was a little too. Well, this just says you can personally disagree, but you are supposed to support the decision.
A trustee must respect the confidential nature of library business. I thought that was an important addition.
Well, are you going to have something? Is your intent to have something that, that says that, that says that, you know, in other words, that once the board makes a decision, all the trustees fall in behind it? As opposed to bickering in public about what should have been done or should have not been done?
No, because that was the, that was the Agnes Quinn problem.
Well, somebody, well, plus it was the way they wrote it in the newspapers too, so.
No, I mean, what Frank was just asking, that once that, that six board members wanted the new library and she wasn't gonna say it. And they tried to use this to stop her from saying, I don't want it.
Well, she publicly came out and said, I don't support this.
And we can't.
I don't know that this stops you from.
We can't force that, like they tried to force her, no.
If you, yeah, I mean, I'm not sure that you can restrict the person for what they, for what they want to say.
Yeah.
I don't think you should.
I don't want it, I don't want it to read in any way.
I think as a matter of good boardsmanship, once a decision's made, the rest of the board should respect the decision. You know, because once the decision is made, it's been made, you know? The fact that you disagreed is clear because you didn't vote in favor of it. But I mean, that's, I'm not saying that you should have something that restricts somebody where, where you're gonna call them out at the next meeting and say you violated the bylaws because you spoke out against what we do. So I, I would agree with you that it should be or something like that.
Should not.
You should not.
What if there was a statement, all trustees should withhold comment to the press or any public body prior to discussion and decision on the issue by the board at an official board meeting?
What do you think about that?
Well, I think it's partly better. I think it's partly important.
I think it is. The board will make the decision and then, you know, just go ahead.
Yeah, I think what you're getting at is having a, having a public discussion in the press before the board.
Before the board's had a chance to meet you. I mean, the only thing I don't like about it, I know I wrote it myself, is now that you've said that we would have a spokesperson, I think that needs to be stated. That again, we have a spokesperson.
You want a public?
Yeah.
It's like that.
I mean, I would just add it to what's here already.
What does everybody else think about that?
I don't think it's a dependent issue, so.
I think we should always discuss things first before making any decisions.
Yeah, I don't think anything should be said to any public body before.
Before a meeting.
A meeting, yeah, before a meeting, period. And.
Okay.
Where are we in the bylaws though?
No, that was one of my additions.
Where's that gonna go from?
At the end of the ethics, there's a D. Where are we sticking this? Where are we putting in about the spokesperson?
Did you want to put it under the president's responsibility to be the spokesperson for the board?
It's a good place to put it.
And just leave it at that?
Okay.
That's not gonna stop a reporter from asking any of the board members.
No, but it would give you, it would give you a good out.
An easy out.
It'd give you a good out. I'm not a spokesman for the board. Thank you. And just hang up. Did it give you a way to politely say no?
If it's said to him enough times, he'll catch up.
I was called twice and I, that's exactly what I said.
Yeah, and it's, I do that, I, more often than you both, I try to.
So is, I just want to understand for when it comes back, is ethics gonna be the ethics statement for public library trustees?
And then you want to add even more restrictions?
All this. It'll be this.
I think it's finally this.
Plus.
We can't begin.
It'll be what's here on the shape of the yellow, plus the one additional statement that all trustees should withhold comments to the press prior to.
Oh, so we're not putting this in?
No.
Oh.
You're gonna take out the.
Well, you're not putting this in.
No. I got the feeling that you people didn't like this.
Well, you don't want to handcuff, you don't want to handcuff people.
Well, that's what I was hearing. And this has enough without the extras on here, as long as people aren't talking to the press before. That's the only thing I would add to it. This was just something that came to my attention today and I thought, well, that's not bad.
But does that mean that you want to, want to no longer officially approve this?
We're not officially.
I thought it was already approved.
Well, yes.
It was approved by the public library board.
No, it's approved by this board.
It's actually had a pause in the last line.
It was approved in.
It probably should be approved.
A lot, I mean, there are a number of.
So this is already.
Policies that this library has approved as boards.
Where did I get this out of? You know where I got this?
This is on the website.
So.
This is on the website.
This is our ethics. Read the bottom. This ethic, our bylaws are never updated to reflect the new ethics they've adopted by the library.
I don't even know where I found this.
We're operating with obsoleted ethics.
Approved by the ungrown public library.
I agree with trustees.
I'm sorry, Frank, I'm in another world by now.
Oh, my gosh.
So our bylaws are so.
Your bylaws never got updated to reflect this.
You're so smart.
Well, I hate smart.
Because it wasn't even in there.
Kevin's got the historical perspective.
Yeah, this is, well, and hysterical and everything.
Because the ethics thing was added.
This, this overrides this.
Overwrites.
So they never even, these bylaws were sloppy, but this is the, this is a culmination of sloppy.
Okay, um.
Well, if this is what it is, it is. Do we want to take out anything from this? We could re, you know?
I would like to take out anything that makes it seem like we are trying to restrict somebody's freedom of speech.
What if we just say a trustee should respect the nature of the library's business?
Well, actually, when you say a trustee must respect the confidential nature of library business.
They're not wrong with that.
The confidential nature of library business is, you know, is pretty clear what that means.
Yeah.
Well, being aware of and in compliance with applicable laws governing free information.
Yeah. I.
Then what, then there's really nothing wrong with this.
There's, there's nothing in here that, that says Kathy can't talk to her neighbor about how much she didn't agree with the way the board.
Absolutely.
No, the only thing that we can say is you can't talk to a public body. I don't think you can get to the.
Well, we're, we're asking the trustees not to speak on behalf of the board. Let that be done by the president. That's one statement.
That's one thing.
That's one statement.
You can also ask them not to talk to a public, which would be the newspaper organization.
Well, that's what we do, well, that's what we do when we say the president speaks on behalf of the board.
Right, right.
Now, I don't have to tell you, I can't make you, there's no, there's nothing written here that stops you from talking to somebody. You want to talk to your neighbor about how rotten a board meeting it was? You can do that. And I don't want that in any way worded in here to make it seem like we're trying to stop that.
Well, I don't think it is.
Good, then these would be okay.
I mean, these already are approved, so.
These would, well, then we, we need to approve to put them into here.
Into ours.
Because they never got here. So this would be okay.
You know what? They were approved, I guess they were approved in one sense, but they weren't approved in the sense of it being part of the bylaws.
So we're not going to put this here.
Right, they were approved as far as being.
So I'm good with the way this thing reads.
This one.
The short story.
And actually.
So take everything else that is already happening here now?
I presented that several months ago. You presented the ethics statement.
I did.
Yes.
I did, I brought it.
You brought it and gave it to the office?
Right.
Oh, you do that one, I'm out of town.
Do you advantage of the trivia on the camera?
Yeah.
The three that are here are already on here.
I know.
Okay.
Also, we're on the.
So now we've got page thirteen.
Are we or are we not then putting in the statement that I made, all trustees should withhold comments to the press or any public body?
No, I think that's too restrictive. I don't want to go there.
I'm saying prior to a board meeting.
Well, you don't have anything to talk about prior to a board meeting anyhow.
Issues come up.
Of course. I'm with Mark on this.
I've never had anybody call me before a board meeting, but they harassed me until later to a board and afterward.
That's right.
On the amendments, one.
The only question I have on amendments, no, I don't have a question. Uh, yeah, section four, do we have elections odd years or even years?
Even years.
That I think we should do this odd years.
No, odd years.
Election of officers is even years, election of.
You're right.
Trustees.
Of trustees is odd years.
It's odd years.
It's municipal election.
Yes.
So I think the bylaw should be after, they're in for a year, which would make it even years.
Right, that's why we did it that way.
Okay.
Just go to page thirteen.
I, I would just say that. I would say in section one, I think what you're really trying to say, consistent with the, uh.
Are you trying, be at the years?
Cons, no.
No amendments.
No amendments, section one. You have the appropriate library and then you struck out active Illinois compiled, you know, because, because technically it's the Illinois compiled statutes is the way you refer to the Illinois statutes, the I, I, you know, the ILCS. But, but what you could do is, is you could say with the, consistent with the, um, the Illinois statutes governing libraries or something like, or governing, governing the library, I think is what you're really trying to say.
So saying, consistent with the Illinois state statutes governing library.
Governing the library.
Governing the library.
Right.
And provided that written notice doesn't end up.
Yeah, and I would just say it's all semantics, but I'll put my two cents in. Instead of minimally in section four, I would say at least.
It's fine.
And then in article ten, you've got a sentence at the end.
It doesn't fit. I don't know what happened.
You're just gonna strike that.
I'm striking it.
Okay.
Okay, so it's.
So now do you want to revisit gifts for a few minutes?
No, I wanted to go away.
Did this give Frank the essence of what we can't prove?
I want gifts to go away and never get any.
Well, that's pretty much how it works.
This is where, um, it's an example of your, um. What do they say? How facts make bad law. Because you've, you've had one situation that's happened in the hundreds years the library's been in existence. And, and you want to craft a bylaw to, 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 you know what?
Fit the monster.
Why bother?
No. I guess I didn't understand the existing one and I started changing it and changing it, but I wasn't really changing it. I was still leaving words in that made me uncomfortable to be agreed.
As a board, you have to come to the grips, you have to come to grips with the issue of whether you do or you don't want to have control over every donation that comes in.
I don't, but that's me. I'm not the board.
Personally, I think that as the treasurer, you have to see how the checks that come in, so you become aware of it. The secretary would know because they're supposed to acknowledge it and the president should know what's going on anyway. So I think that, I think that the board should be aware of any donation that comes in. Ninety-nine times out of.
In the usual course.
In the usual course.
So do you want to just put it into the librarian's report, receive extra donations?
Yeah, they could, they could take care of it.
So then you're saying that the board's not.
But we don't need to approve it.
That the board's not gonna be approving donations.
I, I don't think we need to approve donations, that just seems.
We need the right to refuse them. I don't see that we necessarily need the right to refuse them.
The only right that we, and the library could write it into the policy of gifts, that it must follow the mission statement.
I like the idea.
It's very nebulous.
Well, so is accepting or denying gifts.
Purposefully, they're nebulous.
No, no, you have to check or you don't. Or take the book or you don't.
I would write the bylaw to give us an out, but I wouldn't write the bylaw that makes us approve everything.
Right, I agree.
And if we don't approve everything and you want to approve something, let's put a thousand dollars on it. And anything over a thousand dollars, we get to look at and say yes or no.
I mean, that, that's one way to.
Makes sense.
You know, and then it's.
To make sure that, to make sure that if it's a sizable donation and the board wants to be involved in whether that donation. To make sure that, to make sure that if it's a sizable donation and the board wants to be involved in whether that donation, you know, in the.
Because we could publicly.
If the board wants to consider, rather than, rather than the director, if the board wants to consider whether that thousand dollar, or over a thousand dollars meets with the mission statement, then, then that's one way you could do it.
But I would be as obnoxious as adding to that within two weeks of receipt.
What's happening within two weeks of receipt?
That.
Kind of hard for them.
I know it's kind of hard, but I.
I, we get, our gifts are so infrequent, if we had no policy, it wouldn't make a difference.
Probably.
So we're writing this with thoughts on the future, and I think, I, we, we can always revise this down the road, you know, and, and refine this gift giving thing if suddenly we get this future.
I mean, I, I'm for no restrictions altogether, so you got, you know.
So if there is no restrictions and we're gonna get a thousand dollar gift next week.
I'm not, I'm not holding my breath.
Yeah.
I think there should be a procedure thing though, for the, for the sake of the director, that if a donation comes in, what's the director to do?
That's in your policy.
A.
That's gonna be in your, in your donation policy.
Right, that's what I'm, that's what I'm saying, A, you'd wanna, you'd wanna inform the board, because at the minimum, I think that the board should publicly acknowledge any donations at a meeting, it's another way to get more publicity for any donations that we like. Even if it's a lousy ten bucks, you know.
But some people don't, some people don't want the public.
Well, if they just.
They don't want it, they just wanna give money and go on, I mean.
That's exactly right.
It'd be like Saint Martha standing up there and going, thank you for the twenty, thank you for the fifteen.
They learn that from the Jews.
Well, you don't wanna say, you know, thank you for the five hundred dollar donation that came in from eighteen people this month, you don't wanna say.
I, no, I, I think if, if, I think if anybody says it, it's the director in a director report. Thank the community for the five hundred dollars they sent in this month, but I don't think we wanna get into approving every donation and that.
I agree with you, but do you wanna make the director a fault person for what happened, or do you, do you want us to.
There was no.
There was no fault.
There was no fault, there was no fault.
The board's always the fault person.
Yes, but.
No, F A L L, not a T.
No, I don't want, no, it's like, they're going, as they go about doing their job during the day, ten dollars came in, they make a note in the donations bucket and cash the check. And then at the next board meeting, they go, hey, we got fifteen dollars worth of donations this month, and we can go, great.
I mean, the odds of something like this ever happening, you know.
It's not going to, that's why we're wasting a lot of breath on this.
Is, is next to minus a hundred.
Frank's getting paid by the hour, so, are we done?
I'm done.
Frank knows how to write the gift thing.
I think he, I'm paying your attention.
So this needs to.
You guys are really giving me a lot of direction.
Well, put a thousand dollar limit on it, put a thousand dollar limit on it.
So we're going with the limit, okay.
And then non-cash gets brought before the board, so cars, buildings, land, whatever.
Or, or non-cash, that, that is worth more than a thousand, I mean, all our books are non-cash donations.
Right, right.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, yeah, that's true.
So a thousand dollars cash or value, let me just throw out another number, I mean, I, I don't think thousands is totally bad.
Okay.
But we have the five thousand dollar limit on the spending policy, that the director can do without board approval.
Oh, it'd have to be five thousand.
Yeah, the five thousand, and I was coming up with.
I don't care if it's five thou, I, you know.
I mean, just for consistency.
That's the five thousand, I was coming up with.
You've, you've got five thousand, she can just.
If she can spend five thousand, she should be able to receive five thousand.
Right.
And, and determine what to do with it.
Right.
And determine what to do with it, right, well, it'll only be he for another two months, so. Well, maybe, maybe I don't, it's only be this he for the two months.
Here's, that's a, that's a non sequitur though, guys, sorry, sorry, Kevin, that, that's apples and oranges, just because you can spend five thousand doesn't mean that you should be able to accept five thousand.
Let's just start at a thousand, just start, this thing isn't static, we can always adjust the bylaw, I mean.
I'd be willing to have to go in about a thousand.
So go a thousand, I mean, it's just, and then a non-book or whatever it is.
I think thousands is good.
Yeah, I wasn't.
It just gets it started, it gets this thing going, yeah.
Some of them don't miss their library in their home.
Well, that could be, well, over a thousand dollars.
You may not, you may not wanna accept their home library.
Right, yeah. I mean, we at the museum do not accept books at all, even though we have a very large library there.
So, you know, so donations that are not consistent with our mission statement, whatever, gets brought before the board.
The problem, they don't fit a mission statement, even though they're above the American's. You know, it's like.
So I need a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion to adjourn.
At nine twenty, thank you, in a second.
Then I second it.
Thank you.
All in favor?